Before we call the roll, I just want to apologize to everybody. We had a couple of meetings with our professionals on pending litigation and unfortunately, we have to meet when they're available and to have them wait actually causes us to spend money. So, we apologize for that. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, September 19, 2017. The time is now 9:00 PM. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 1st, 2016, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News, and the December 2nd, 2016, issue of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's office. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
All present, Mayor.
Reports, Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a Shea Tree report for the month of August.
Bills?
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for Tuesday, September 19, 2017, Public Affairs, $121,564.29. Revenue in Finance, $2,962,852.12. Public Safety, $45,168.66. Public Works, $409,596.2. Parks and Public Property, $76,331.25. For total payroll, $812,593.70. For a grand total of $4,428,106.4.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. I understand we have a Boy Scout in the audience tonight that is coming here to observe our township government in action. So, welcome Daniel Cusack. You want to come up and say a couple of words? Come up to the mic.
Hi, I'm Dan. Just wanted to say thanks for having me. I'm doing the Communications Mayor Badge for 222. It's an Eagle Scout required and I have, this is my last Eagle Scout required to get Life Scout. So, I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for coming, Daniel. Good luck with your Eagle Scout. Public comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Maybe I'd like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only. Seeing none, motion closed, public comment?
Motion. Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Board of Commissioner announcements, Commissioners? Announcements? Let's go to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Rogers?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to reintroduce ordinance number 3368. It's basically the same ordinance, but there were some additions to it. It will not affect the date of the public hearing. This is an ordinance to amend the Code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 217, entitled Animals, to add Article 6, entitled Sale of Dogs and Cats. Where adding is in 217-47, restrictions on the sale of animals will allow pet stores to collaborate with animal care facilities and animal rescue organizations, and we're adding in there reputable hobby breeders. In addition to that, we're adding the violations and penalties clause to that particular ordinance. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on October 3rd, 2017. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Bishop Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Resolutions, Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley wishes to utilize an existing matching grant from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres Program, for improvements to Father Glot's backfield, and said improvements include, but are not limited to, the installation of new artificial turf, concrete improvements, and other general site improvements. And whereas Neglia Engineering Associates has completed design and engineering tasks that are required by the Green Acres Program, said plans and specifications have been forwarded to the Green Acres staff for review. And whereas the project design documents indicate a multipurpose field that will be lined for varsity soccer and youth soccer and lacrosse, now therefore be resolved by Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex State and New Jersey, that the plans and specifications for the Father Glot's Backfield Returf Project be prepared by Design Engineer Brian Intendola, P.E.C.M.E., shall reflect Green Acres requirements and now therefore be further resolved upon receipt of said plans and specifications from Design Engineer. The Municipal Clerk is hereby directed to advertise for sealed bids to be received, open and read on Wednesday, October 11, 2017, at 3:00 PM prevailing time. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5. And whereas the RFQ for Township Forester was received and opened on Wednesday, September 7, 2017. And whereas the most responsible and responsive request for qualifications was from the Shea Tree Department, LLC, John Linson, PO Box 6089, West Orange, New Jersey. And whereas Shea Tree Department, LLC, John Linson, New Jersey Certified Tree Expert, Number 198, has provided these services in the past to the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued service. And whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing September 1st, 2017, and continued through August 31st, 2018. And whereas the contract is not to exceed $22,000, and funds are available from Account 7-01512200 in the amount of $2,595, and 801512200 in the amount of $19,405. Funds which have been certified with the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County, of Essex State and New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to the Shea Tree Department, LLC, John Linson, as described herein. The response to the RFQ be placed on file with this resolution and a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley has determined that the property described on Schedule A, attached here to and incorporated herein, is no longer needed for public use, and be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex State and New Jersey, that the Township Clerk be, and she is hereby authorized, to advertise for sealed bids for surplus equipment that is no longer in use by the Township, and be further resolved that the equipment is to be sold as is and where is, bids to be received on Wednesday, October 18th, 2017, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, in the Commission Chamber's Town Hall, Mon Kennedy Drive, at which time they will be publicly opened and read. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex State and New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $7,480.31 for Block 5206-4 for $2,529.3, and for Block 3900-1.01 for $4,951.28. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of water charges in the amount of $164.24 for Block 401, Lot 13. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Board of Adjustment received an escrow deposit in the amount of $4,000 from North American Eagle Construction for property located at 57 East Center Street. Whereas the escrow fee of $4,000 was collected and deposited into trust account T15910955. And whereas the Board of Adjustment has reviewed, determined that the balance of $1,295 is due to North American Eagle Construction, LLC. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County, of Essex State and New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund the escrow fee in the amount of $1,295 to North American Eagle Construction. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, thank you. I'm just going to read these by titles. This is our drive sober or get pulled over grants for an amount of $1,058.75. It's Resolution 204-17. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you. And Resolution 205-17, this is our Safe and Secure Communities Grant. This is for $60,000, which we get pretty much every year. So, I'll move that one as well.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And the next resolution I have, 206-17, this is for a grant for $801. This is that Taratino Community Policing Grant Program. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Just trying to save some time, being we were back there so long.
Well done.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Whereas raffle applications were received from the following organizations. Ratcliffe School PTO, License Number 43-17, on premise 50/50 cash raffle license to be held Saturday, November 4th, 2017. Ratcliffe School PTO, License Number 44-17, on premise merchandise raffle to be held Saturday, November 4th, 2017. Gutcher Perd Academy Homeschool Associations, License Number 45-17, calendar raffle to be held Mondays, February 5th, 2018, through April 23rd, 2018. Nutley Irish American Association, License Number 46-17, off premise 50/50 cash raffle to be held Friday, December 8th, 2017. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by Municipal Clerk and Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex State and New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. I'll read this next one by title, also to save some time. This is Resolution Number 208-17, which is a budget insertion for Clean Communities Program Grant, $50,492.21. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas the Law Firm of Cleary Jacoby Alphieri Jacobs, LLC, 169 Roundford Valley Road, Upper Level 105, Oakland, New Jersey, has been ordered a non-fair and open contract as an attorney, as special counsel to specifically provide legal counsel services concerning municipal zoning review and attachment of Nutley pursuant to revisions of NJSA 1944A 20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate on June 26, 2017, Resolution Number 147-17. Whereas attachment of Nutley intended to a contract with the Law Firm of Cleary Jacoby Alphieri Jacobs for a contract in the amount of $7,500. And whereas such services have exceeded the original contract in the amount of $2,044 for a total contract in the amount of $9,544. Whereas the funds are available in Account Number 7-012-20015 in the amount of $2,044, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County, of Essex State and New Jersey, that change order number one is a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with the Law Firm of Cleary Jacoby Alphieri Jacobs, and are hereby authorized and approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
No.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. This is approval to submit a grant application and executed grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Township of Nutley, Harrison Avenue, that's Harrison Street Road Improvement Project, Section 3, from Bluefield Avenue to East Passaic Avenue. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 40A 9-133, Alenny Pettis has competently and diligently fulfilled all the duties and responsibilities of Municipal Clerk of the Township of Nutley. And whereas Ms. Pettis received her registered Municipal Clerk license on April 11, 2008, and was appointed to her first term on September 19, 2014. Whereas Ms. Pettis has served as Municipal Clerk for the Township of Nutley for three consecutive years following her appointment, consistent with NJSA 40A 9-133.7. Whereas Ms. Pettis has completed the necessary continuing education requirements and maintains her RMC license in good standing. Whereas the government body is desirous of reappointing Ms. Pettis as Municipal Clerk for the Township of Nutley. And whereas Chris Durk, Essex County Municipal Clerk, is fully supportive of her reappointment as Municipal Clerk, noting her competence managing elections and service to the public. Whereas Ms. Pettis has distinguished herself as a registered Municipal Clerk by attaining recognition than the Essex County Municipal Clerks Association, serving as their current Vice President. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, thus in accordance with NJSA 40A 9-133 and 133.7, hereby reappoint Ms. Alenny Pettis in the position of Municipal Clerk effective September 19, 2017. I proudly move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Before I vote, I'd just like to make one brief comment. It says in here that you, Alenny, has distinguished herself as a registered Municipal Clerk through the Clerks Association. I think more importantly, she's distinguished herself with this body. So, I very proudly vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Well learned and well deserved. I vote yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Petracca?
I'd just like to say that it's always a pleasure working with Alenny. When I was the Mayor here, that's when you first came up, and you know, the leaps and bounds you made, and you've always been fair to all of us. And it's great to have you here. So, I vote aye.
Thank you. Mayor Scarpelli?
Commissioner Rogers wants to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say mine to the end, Mayor, but I'll go before you. Outstanding work, and I've got to tell you, no one, I don't think on the face of this earth could really appreciate what a person in her position goes through to meet the needs of the citizens, of the Commissioners. You know, anytime I call, and I call a lot now, any hour, day or night, weekends, holidays, she's there picking up the phone and then getting back to me in a real timely manner. So, Alenny, I know the people of this town really appreciate the work you're doing, and I thank you. Thank you very much. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Scarpelli?
Yeah, before I vote, I'd like to say it's been a pleasure working with you, Alenny. Not only as a Commissioner, but now as the Mayor. We come in a lot more contact as the Mayor. And in the Commission form of government, the Clerk becomes very important because it's the one centralized hub that serves all our departments. So, I proudly vote yes and wish you all good luck.
Thank you.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk, could you read the notice?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Maybe I'd like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Name and address.
My name is Gerald James Ferraro. I live at 34 Roosevelt Street, right here in my beloved town of Nutley, New Jersey. I thank the Commission for giving me this chance to speak. On June 29th, I wrote a letter to Mr. Gene Diaz, and please correct me if I'm wrong at any point, who is the CEO and project manager for the redevelopment of the Hackla Road site. I asked him in the letter to seriously consider putting a three-tiered nursing home on the site, that is assisted living, subacute care, and acute care, including care for ventilated patients. Every man sitting on there, I think anyway, on this commission tonight, knows that this is a personal thing for me. That's why I'm here petitioning your assistance on this. It's a very difficult decision when you have a loved one that someday may not be able to be cared for anymore at home, and they have to be put somewhere where they can get competent and compassionate care. So, I also went around in the meantime, since June 29th and before tonight's meeting, getting a total on this paperwork I'm going to submit to the Clerk of the town, a total of 87 signatures in support of this. Even though citizens that did not want to sign thought it was a very nice, very good idea for our town, a novel idea, in fact, one man had said to me. I am going to submit other signatures in the future. I have two assistants that are with me here tonight, Mrs. Terry Quirk, and also in an advisory capacity, Mrs. Penny Landry. Okay? I just wanted to acknowledge them, and I thank them for their help with this project. I have some questions for the Commission. If I could just do a quick roundtable and keep it within the three-minute confine, okay? Mr. Mayor, I'll begin with you. The umbrella question, the one most asked, is this whole project in its entirety at Roche, and now my pursuit to try and get Mr. Diaz to include a nursing home on the site, how does it affect our tax base in town?
Well, as you know, Mr. Ferraro, we were receiving transitional aid, of which we got cut over $1.75 million. And very cognizant we are of what's going to be the return on that property as we go forward. So, it's one of the things we're looking at with a fine-tooth comb and going through of what's going to be developed there, and how much ratables is it going to add to the Nutley tax base. And I don't want to step on Commissioner Evans' toes, but you know, this is something we're considering on an ongoing basis as we get proposals back from the developer and we negotiate with them. It's certainly something we're going to be looking at because we need to replace those ratables that we lost when Roche moved out. So, to give you a definitive answer, if we're going to ever recoup those monies, I don't know, but we're going to try our hardest to get to that point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may continue on that note, I would like to ask Commissioner Evans, please define briefly and explain the difference between profit and not-for-profit, especially when it comes to nursing homes.
In a very simple sense, for-profit entity is concerned about what their earnings would be, the bottom line. A not-for-profit entity serves a different purpose. It's generally around some type of form of public good, charitable organization, charitable foundation, sort of like if you go to the Williamsburg area, you know, for, you know, something that's history-related, you know, as an example, a museum, you know, they would have a different purpose, is to create a different type of value that's measured other than bottom-line profit. Both, whether it's for-profit or not-for-profit, has to generate, you know, earnings and manage its expenses in order to be self-sustaining. A not-for-profit, though, it probably does more in the area of fundraising or, you know, looking for endowments to sustain their long-term future. Whereas a for-profit entity does not entertain endowments, they actually entertain what's a business decision that's going to generate enough revenue to sustain the entity for what it is. And it's very, in a simple sense, one's desire is to make money, the other is to provide a certain defined good for a community or for some organization. Okay?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Was that clear enough, or?
Yes, the best that I can do.
No, if I didn't declare it enough, I'll try to do better. But at least, at the essence of that, one is really defines itself around making money, the other defines itself around some other parameter. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci, at the assisted living level, how would that affect things I often hear about with the two senior homes that are here now in Nutley? How would that sort of clear the decks so that they could start using, bringing new people into these senior homes here if some of them went to the assisted living here? I'm sorry.
It depends on how much assistance folks would require, all right? And as I'm sure you can imagine, there are varying degrees, all right, in any assisted living complex. Most of our folks in our senior buildings, all right, are dealing with some sort of challenge, but not to the extent where they would need to be in an assisted living facility with that extra help. But once they got to that point, then obviously it would be a natural transition to move folks from our senior buildings into that assisted living facility, all right, to give them what's possible. So, yeah, theoretically, it can create space and more openings in our senior buildings for our more able-bodied seniors.
Thank you. Thank you. That's exactly where I was going with that. Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to say that if any of the Commissioners want to reserve on a comment, please, you know, invoke that right to reserve, okay? Commissioner Petracca, okay. Another question, often asked on my little tour here, how does it affect our public safety services in town in its entirety, plus the nursing home? How would it affect our public safety services? Tell me if I answered them even halfway right, that I believed that Hackensack Meridian and Seton Hall had their own security and campus police. And I couldn't answer their question beyond that. Can you further that question, answer?
Sure. First of all, let me applaud you for coming up here tonight, and I know you and I had many conversations, and I met your sister firsthand, and it's unbelievable what your family has done to step up to give her the care she needs because it's quite challenging, I could imagine. So, God bless all of you, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. You know, I don't know that an assisted living project like that would, you know, engage a lot of public safety needs. But as far as the whole campus, I've already had talks with our attorney, John Iglesimo, about having that project fund some more police officers. And I believe they did that at Bear Aspirin up in East Hanover when I talked to John. So, we're on that track to try to get some money out of the developer. Now, at the time when this was all going on, when Roche first moved out, and I was privy to all those meetings, and I was with Jimmy Ansaldi, Cliff, the Mayor, what happened to cross the highway is very impactful on public safety and even other services that the towns offer. You know, because they have a security department, there's going to be accidents in these parking lots, people backing into each other. Roche had their own somewhat fire department, ambulance department, ambulance rather. And, you know, it's going to impact police and fire and our ambulance squad because, you know, now our fire department, along with mutual aid from other towns, are going to have to respond there, God forbid, if something happens. And, you know, those are high-rise buildings, you know, in there. So, you know, we hope that the fire prevention that's put in place will minimize that risk. But, you know, at any given time, right now, we have, you know, five police officers on the street. You know, we have- You know, we have seven firefighters sitting in our fire department. So, do you think that if, God forbid, one of those buildings caught on fire, that, you know, what seven guys could do, what five guys could do? Now, we have a mutual plan in effect as well through the whole county, but I think the resources are gonna be stressed there and I'm really pushing, you know, for the developer to pick up some of that cost because I don't think that a security, you know, detail there as far as, you know, hiring security guards, which don't carry guns usually, you know, is really gonna be the answer there. So, I'm concerned about that. You bring up a good point.
Not to bounce back and forth, I'm trying to maintain some kind of consistency. Commissioner Petrakko, it's come to my attention through word of mouth that you either authored or sponsored a bill that made it through the state legislature so that non-for-profit facilities still would pay ratables and taxes. Can you address that question and answer?
Well, unfortunately, there was no bill passed.
Oh.
But, you know, and I can't, I mean, it was a team effort here too. And at the time, Commissioner Tucci and I were on the repurposing committee and we were the first municipality ever in the state of New Jersey to have a pilot program where non-for-profits were paying taxes, you know, and it's a complex situation, you know, and I wasn't even aware of it until John Iglesimo has told me that, that it was, we were the first municipality to do that. So, something to be proud of and, you know, we have a lot of work cut out for us at Roach and we're hoping that those ratables catch up and we can give some benefits and tax relief to Nutley residents as well.
Mr. Ferraro, one more question, all right, and wrap it up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
For Commissioner Rogers, aside from the competent and compassionate care that all of us would want brought into a facility like this, what would the role be of your office as far as maintaining some kind of oversight at the facility?
Well, to begin with, I wanna follow up on what Commissioner Petrakko said. You know, I'm looking at you and my eyes are going right back to that young man and I'm looking back and forth. And I'm saying to myself, what a pleasure to have an individual like you come up and teach this young fellow and others who are probably watching, the civil discourse, civil discourse, there's so much not going on around the country and you come up here tonight and you do this. I wanna commend you for that, the way you've handled yourself, your demeanor, your articulate, really good stuff, thank you. Let me get to a couple of points that are important. We have a growing population, elder population in Nutley. Look, my mother's ninety, gonna be ninety-two in February, we all have elderly parents and, you know, I think about that often, you know, will that day ever come? And I'm sure we all do. Your cause is noble and I'm sure it has the support of every Commissioner up here. Before I directly answer your question, I'm gonna ask you to do something. Look, you could get probably a thousand signatures, they're all over town, and I know it's a hard thing to do, but you could get that. I would ask you to think about contacting our state representatives, our assemblymen, our senators, they too have parents, you know, they too have relatives, and I am sure that they too would have a sensitive ear to this. Sometimes in government, there are so many issues that government officials have to address, your priorities kinda get shuffled around. So, the more they hear about this very, very important issue, which is not here in Nutley, but it's statewide, the more it causes them to take action. So, think about that. As far as oversight, it depends on whether it would be nonprofit or for-profit, but I could tell you this, the health department now, we have visiting nurses, we have a nurse in the family program, they're out every day visiting senior citizens, disabled elder residents in their homes every day, sometimes at night. So, a facility like that would be a tremendous benefit to us, and I must tell you this, I don't think there's a month that goes by that I do get a call from someone who's looking for an elder care center, someone who's looking for a center where there could be 24/7 coverage. So, we wouldn't have much oversight, I know, I couldn't answer the question unless I had the specifics of what type of project this would be. But I could tell you this, keep going, keep going. You need our help, I'm sure you got it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Excuse me, I think it's important, Joe. Mr. Ferraro, Mr. Ferraro, just a quick point. You know, all of your questions started out with the thought of assisted living on the Hocken Roach site. I think, you know, this is something that as a Board of Commissioners, we've discussed at great length, so I don't want you to think it's something that you're proposing tonight that we're just sort of considering. It's been on the table to have discussions with the developer about this as something that, because all of us have been approached by various residents and the nature of how important that would be. So, I don't want you to leave with the fact that we haven't been thinking about that or discussing it, I think it's been some significant conversation for quite a long time. So, just, I understand and I also applaud you for the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might, I believe it was also included in the original schemes that were presented to us by Perkins Eastman. So, it's a wonderful idea and I'm glad that you're supporting it and you endorse that effort, but it's something that's been talked about, something that was included from the beginning.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, can I just make two bullet points? I'm sorry, I apologize. All of you men sitting up here tonight, through this request, have an opportunity to lead Nutley into the modern era. I see a lot of faces on these walls, some of them are notables. Fate has given you the handoff to make something like this happen, and I know that all of you, based on your comments here tonight, will try your best, will keep trying my best as well. And I just wanna thank all my Nutley friends, neighbors, relatives, and concerned citizens that did sign this list that I submitted to Ms. Clerk, Hetz, is it, tonight. Thank them very much for their support in this matter. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro.
Thank you for your patience.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Terry Quirk, 45 Hampton Place. I'm here as Jerry's friend. He came to me, it was a couple of months ago, and he told us, told me his story along with his wife, and I know the circumstances from which he speaks, and like you had said, we're all in the sandwich generation. We're all here, we've all raised our children, and now we're into role reversal and we're now taking over the role as the caregiver for our parents. I'm living that myself. So, I am working on getting more signatures for you because I just think it's a good conversation to have. I know you've had it in regards to the development, but I just think it helps people to understand that there is support, that we're all in the same boat, nobody's different here, you know, we're all facing the same demons. But I just wanted to say one thing, and I don't mean to be mean about this, but, and I lived in Clifton for five years, I loved it, but I moved here after that. And I just wanna say that after seeing Clifton Commons, we watched Clifton walk away with many great things. They walked away with the shopping mall and they walked away with the movie theater, and things were left for us to kinda clean up in terms of public safety, had to go down there, it created problems with parking, it just created things that we did not expect. But now we have this opportunity to really do something wonderful for the people of Nutley. And, you know, it just would be a great thing if we can just do something like this and so that it shows that the people of Nutley, who we've been here for so many years, generations upon generations, we're gonna get something for our people and for our family members who have been here. So, I just applaud all of you for thinking about it and for considering it. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
We're in 462 Chestnut Street. Mrs. Scarpelli, I owe Mr. Petrakko an apology. On Facebook, I had put a post up with your name on it saying, I believe it was, the Nutley taxpayers with the goose that laid the golden egg. I put your name in accidentally and I do apologize to you for that. I meant to put Mr. Evans' name in, and I didn't do that, mean to do that as an insult. However, last year, I think it was March, when you referred to the Moody's report, you touted that report as if it was something wonderful, and I was so impressed with what you said. I called Moody's, and it took me two days, but I found that the people who actually did the calculations on it, I think that you seriously left out a lot of good, that the taxpayers in that Moody's report, the average household income was $125,000. And I think that was remiss that you did not mention that the report really was a reflection of what the taxpayers did, not what the board did. Because when I spoke to the woman on the calculations team, the two numbers that were significantly used was 125,000 and 85,000. Had Nutley been used at 85,000, which means the citizens made less money, the numbers would have been significantly lower and would have moved us significantly down as far as the economics were concerned that you tried to tap. I felt that was a little dismissal to the people because to generate an average household income of $125,000, that's saying a lot. That means people worked very, very hard, and I think that you left that portion out. And that's what I was trying to say in my Facebook post, and I do apologize to you, Mr. Petrakko. Thank you.
Anybody else wanna address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Before we go in the back, I'd like to say something, if it's okay. Number one, somebody came to me, and I urge all the Nutley residents to do this because I do hold our police department accountable and our firefighters, and I have a saying there, if you wanna get paid like a professional, I expect you to act like one. And somebody came to me about a police officer that was parked in front of his house on midnights and he was sleeping there and a whole bunch of things. At any rate, the good news today is that we have GPS in the cars, so when I got that information, I'll call it, I went back to the GPS and we checked that car in town. And periodically, we do check to see where our police officers are, what they're doing and that kinda stuff. And there was no foul to report at this time, which I'm very proud of. Also, as I go through town, a couple of people in the audience, they have approached me about, you know, this fire truck stuff. So, Mr. Janet Temple stopped me at any time, but I do feel that now that it is out of the prosecutor's office...
How about now?
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. I'm so glad you're back to normal. But I do feel on a serious note that it is, there is a need to comment on that because it was a very traumatic happening in town when, you know, a vehicle of that size almost goes over a bridge into the water and there's firefighters in it, all that. So, at any rate, you know, the prosecutor's office, they come back deemed it an accident. I am guilty of going on some of these posts once in a while and I see, you know, oh, what's that gonna cost the taxpayers and things like that? The bright side of the conclusion of that is that being, the truck was coming out of compliance because it was over twenty years old. And to give Commissioner Evans a little pat on the back for this as well, we've been budgeting in our budget, in our capital budget for the last few years, to put the money aside to pay for a new fire truck. So, when we went to, we were planning on trading that fire truck in and so my shop, I would say, they wanted to give us like $30,000 on a trade-in value for that truck. So, the only bright side that came out of it, thank God there was minor injuries and no one was seriously hurt, you know, the insurance company will pay us much more than that. Mr. Janet Temple, I wanna say it's around that $100,000, $150,000 mark. So, again, $30,000, the bright side is that we're gonna get a little bit more money for that. Also, going around town and seeing different things, part of our hiring process in public safety, because I've seen some questions out there of late, we follow civil service rules, there is no jumping-around list without getting civil service approval, there's no, you know, there's no family members getting hired, I couldn't even hire my own kids if they didn't take the test and be on the civil service list. So, unfortunately, there's a criteria that everyone needs to meet to be eligible to be a police officer or firefighter, and if you don't meet that criteria, unfortunately, you could be dismissed from the process. But before you're dismissed from the process as the Director of Public Safety, we need to get approval from civil service. So, if there's anybody that has a question for me in the future about how we hire, you know, again, what happened to the fire truck, I would be, I would be very glad to talk about it, but not for one second do I want anybody to leave here tonight or in, on TV land also, you know, to be, to think that it wasn't a big concern of mine in where those funds were gonna come from and what we were planning in the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you have a motion to go into back into executive session?
I motion that we go to executive session.
Move it.
Alan, you want me to read the resolution, right? Reread the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley moving to close executive session to discuss personnel. Be it further resolved at a time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public shall be when and as such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. We will be coming back into public session, no action will be taken, we'll just be coming back to close the meeting.